Call this meeting to order, regular city commission, Rio Grande City. It is Wednesday, July the 18th, 6:02 PM. Here in Commission Chamber, City Hall 5332 East US Highway 83, Suite A, Rio Grande City, Texas. At this time, we'll have the invocation by Commissioner Ramirez, followed by the pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Flores.
This is our head, Attorney Father, and I ask you to please guide us as we conduct the city business today. I ask you to please give us a wisdom to make the right decisions as we move forward to improve the city of Rio Grande City. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
United States of America, and the republic for which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. Amen. The pledge of allegiance to the Texas one state and one nation.
This time, we have item 1B, roll call and finding a forum. Ms. Penya?
Mayor Villarreal.
Here.
Mayor Garcia Garza.
Here.
Commissioner Flores.
Here.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
You have a forum, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Penya. Next business in orders, item 1C, departmental reports.
We've got two. Ms. Sarah Hernandez.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. At this time, I would like to make a special recognition of some of our volunteers that have been helping us in many of the different events. We have something to present to them, so we can take a little bit of time to recognize the STC Psychology Club for being star volunteers.
Ms. Saravia, would you like to say a few words?
Good afternoon, everybody. The Psychology Club members and I are very glad to help out in the community in every way that we can. They are true star volunteers, and we will continue making a difference in any way that we can. Thank you for the opportunity and for the recognition as well.
Thank you. And any of the members who'd like to say a few words more than...
Yeah. Good afternoon. So when it comes to our community involvement, we don't do it for the recognition. Obviously, we do it to serve others in the community, put others' people's needs before ours. So knowing that you all have taken the time to recognize us today, it makes us feel very appreciative, make us feel like our work here is recognized and it does not go unnoticed. So thank you all so much for going ahead and recognizing us with this plaque.
Thank you. We can come up here and take a photograph, Commissioner?
Yes.
Okay.
He will be providing an update on the citywide cleanup. Before we do that, I just want to again go back to the Star Side Club. Thank you so much for the time that you spend. I know I've collected trash and other functions, but it's great to have a group that's willing to give back to the community and cannot say enough about members that are willing to give back in some way, shape, or form. So again, thank you very much for what you do. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Guerra?
Thank you, sir. I would like to refer a little bit of the citywide cleanup that we had since May the 29th to June the 1st. We had 18.29 tons of collection that was collected through the citywide cleanup for that week only. And in June the 25th to June the 29th, we collected 23.21 tons out of bulk in for the citywide cleanup.
Quite a tonager.
Well, it's improving. It's improving.
So it seems more and more people are taking more of their stuff to the 14 acres.
I wish could say this is will benefit out of this program.
I think that we need to do a little bit of more advertising as far as the availability of the services that have been provided over there at the 14 acres.
Okay.
And that we continue educating the people as far as the scheduling, when they're going by to pick up brush and other items that they put out for us to pick up. Continue educating them in the fact, you know, to please help us out by putting it on the street and on the alley.
Exactly, sir.
And, you know, maybe try, I know that we've been using our channel for that, but maybe some social media advertising.
The citywide cleanup is the last week out of every month, so people will be aware of every month, the last week.
We're looking at different, we'll look at different alternatives to see how.
We need to continue, you know, putting the word out.
All right, sir.
Thank you, sir.
And on that note, Mr. Guerra, I know that the crew has been out there cleaning the drainage systems and making sure that...
Yes, they're doing a lot of improvements.
And that certainly helped out a lot. The recent rains, several inches, and by and large, I think Rio Grande City was able to drain pretty well. So, loose to the staff and all the personnel for handling those, that rain considerably well, so cannot stress that enough. And continue, of course, on that track, considering we have hurricane season already amongst us, sir, so let's, if we can continue on that track. But thank you, sir, for doing that, and all your staff, and of course, all the city personnel.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Fernando.
That's it, ma'am.
Is it for departmental reports?
Yes, sir.
That's it? All right, moving on. Next business in orders, item 2, consent agenda. We have letter A, approval of departmental travel request, and letter B, approval of minutes from previous meetings. Anything there? Commissioner, do you have that consent agenda? Do we...
Mayor motion to approve items A and B.
Okay, we have a motion to approve items A and B by Commissioner Ramirez.
I second.
Have a second by Commissioner Garza. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose. She carries. Next business in orders, item 3, letter A, ordinances, discussion and possible action to authorize repealing City of Rio Grande City's smoking ordinance 2011-6 and conduct the second reading and approval of ordinance 2018-4 to replace ordinance 2011-6 as the city's updated smoking ordinance. Any changes or anything?
No changes.
Did we take care of the issue from the last meeting? The corrections that we were gonna make and...
On the smoking ordinance?
Yeah.
Was this the distance from...
Well, we tabled it last week, last time.
No, the sign ordinance.
The sign ordinance.
Ah, the sign ordinance, okay. Okay, okay.
Would you like to say something?
No, she wants a photo up.
Do we have anyone representing or speaking regarding...
Hello, Mayor Villarreal, and Commissioners, thank you so much for taking upon consideration the repeal and replacement of this ordinance, and I commend you on all of your commitment and your work, your staff. Mr. Pettis, the city manager, deputy city manager, Ms. Bayes have been tremendous to work with, and your city is moving forward in so many, so many ways, and this is going to help to improve the health of your community. And I'm Rosalie Weisfeld, I'm from the American Heart Association. Thank you so much. And once you pass this ordinance, you will be city 101. So we're very, very excited to have you on the map. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, if we could take a minute to take a photo with Ms. Weisfeld and...
Hello, Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Stephanie Garza, and I'm a part of the Star Card Youth Coalition in this city. I strongly believe that Rio Grande City should not allow smoking in any public places, including bars and small businesses. Tobacco is the single most preventable cause of death in the United States. Secondhand smoke causes premature death and disease in children and adults who do not smoke. There is no safe amount of smoke. The 2006 U.S. Surgeon General's report was clearly the only safe way to, the only safe way to prevent secondhand smoke is to eliminate exposure. Exposure to secondhand smoke is undeniably dangerous, and it is in the public's best interest to be protected 100% from environmental tobacco smoke. I feel it very unfair that people in public spaces are highly, they have a higher risk of getting sick and/or dying of other people's consequences, of other people's decisions. People who want to breathe smoke-free air should not have to be exposed to secondhand smoke, and this new regulation is necessary to protect all non-smokers. This is a public health issue. One's personal freedom ends when it comes to harm others. I am a young citizen of Rio Grande City and support 100% smoke-free indoor workplace ordinance, and I hope that you also support 100% free, smoke-free Rio Grande City.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilors.
Good evening.
I just wanted to, when Rosalie came to my office and asked about this more pre-ordinance, and she had given me a map of the cities that were on the map, as she stated earlier, and back in, in September of 2017, there was 82 cities on the map, and just this last June, and there's 98 cities. And so I will be very proud if Rio Grande becomes the next city to become 100% smoke-free. We've come a long way since 2011, and I do have one of the, one of the billboards, I don't know if you remember, that we posted back in 2011, I mean, want Rio Grande to be smoke-free. I'm gonna pass it around, you'll get see it. So I, I'm glad that we, you know, I'm, I'm glad that this is going to happen, if it does happen, because it's gonna save a lot of lives, and I hope more cities become smoke-free. And one of the handouts that I passed out to you, and another, was another, other reason that we were pushing for this, is the e-cigarettes, which is going on a lot with the youth, and so hopefully this ordinance will help in the future to prevent the e-cigarette that's going on right now with the youth. So thank you very much for your, for your continuous support in the issues that we work on. Thank you.
Thank you.
They're gonna take a picture?
Well, let's, we can first take a motion, but...
I'd like to make a motion to pass item 3A.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion to approve item 3A. We have Commissioner Ramirez second, by Commissioner Flores. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries. Congratulations.
Remember to ask for a statement so much. Thank you, Mayor, thank you so much. Thank you so much. And thanks to Matt and Rose for giving us this opportunity to...
Second reading, reading and consider approval of resolution number 2018-16, authorizing the Rio Grande City 4B Economic Development Corporation an expenditure of $20,000 for construction of commercial sewer infrastructure which promotes and develops new or expanded business enterprises.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners.
Good evening.
As you just mentioned, this resolution was read for the first time at our previous city commission, and we are recommending your approval for second reading and passage.
Any question? Do we have a motion at this time?
No.
May we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Garza?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Jones. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose. She carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gen. Next is letter B, discussion and possible action to approve resolution number 2018-18, authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the Libraries Connecting Texas Project through the Texas State Library and Archives Commission in the amount of $2,244 for the period of July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2019. Establishment of appropriations in an amount not to exceed $2,244. Three receipt and deposit funds in the amount not to exceed $2,244, and four execution of the grant agreement not to exceed $2,244. We have Ms....
Ms. Holt?
Ms. Holt.
Ms. Holt.
But as soon as I saw you there, Ms. Holt.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. This is moving forward with our e-grant funds that we got this year for 2018. We did get some consulting. They did ask for a direct deposit, which we have already submitted, and we just need this approved so that, I mean, so that the money can come back to us. And also, I just, we received notification from Spectrum, and we have been credited or given a discount of $16,000 for the e-rate, that we had been paying at 100% as we were waiting for our discount. But this coming year, the state got grant consultants that, they got a grant which we were able to get the consultants to help us with the application. And so, moving forward, our bills will be at the discount at 10%.
Fantastic.
Pretty good.
See, again, 10%, top 10%. But thank you, Ms. Holt, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Definitely monies. Maybe we have a motion at this time?
What's a move, Mayor?
Have a motion to approve, letter B, by Commissioner Ramirez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Garza. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose. She carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holt. Thank you. Next business in orders, item 5A, discussion and possible action to declare certain equipment as surplus. Item 5A.
Mayor, Commissioners, this is the Parks and Recs had some helmets that they no longer used, that they would wish to donate, I believe, to Miguel Aleman. I believe we've donated before to them some of their items from the fire department, and this is just asking for approval to do that. This is equipment no longer used by them.
And how many helmets?
Eighty-five.
Mr. Guerra, do you have a number?
Eighty-one.
Eighty-one, total.
Eighty-one, and shoulder packs as well?
Just the helmets.
Just the helmets.
All right, so we have a motion.
What's a move?
Have a motion to approve item 3, or 5A by Commissioner Ramirez, second by Commissioner Garza. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose. She carries. Next is 5B, presentation and discussion regarding ambulance services and receive commission's direction for staff regarding the same.
Mayor, Commissioners, Chief Ray has invited some folks to present to you just what's available, and so we can, we're asking for permission to go forward with this, so I'll let him introduce the folks he's invited.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners.
Oh, Chief.
We're looking at trying to see if we can get a 24-hour service EMS provider for the city till, for response time for the citizens and community of Rio Grande. Not only for that, to have better response time and better service for the community. So we have two individuals, or actually companies, that are gonna be doing a small presentation, and then after the presentation, hopefully y'all can, y'all can go some directions or whichever one you do. It's gonna have to depend on several things, so after that, hopefully do a workshop and, you know, explain more detail on how it's gonna benefit the city.
Right.
We're gonna have a TransStar to require, do a small presentation, and then we're gonna have the city appalled.
Okay.
First of all, I'd like to give thanks for allowing us to be here with you guys and doing this presentation. My name is Daniel Lerma. I am an owner and the vice president of TransStar EMS, and I'm here along with, with my partner and president of TransStar EMS. First of all, I'd just like to say that we're locally owned and operated here in Rio Grande off of the hospital road just north of STC, and we've been serving the, the community since 2009, and our hopes and dreams for this community is to improve the situation of the 911 calls. You know, just, you know, we wanna give the community better quality and better response time. And what we propose to offer the, the city is to have two full-time units at all time with a backup unit on the 24/7, and what I'd like to point out first and foremost is whenever there is a 911 response call, especially anything that's outside the city limits, that the city is never gonna be exposed without having a unit here. Plus, any mass casualties, we do have an additional 10 units available for, for any, any mass situations that might occur, which are non-emergency transport units that can become a priority to the city as well. So like I said, you know, we've been operating for 10 years here within the city, and we're members of the Texas Ambulance Association, members of the Emergency Medical Task Force, you know, who say specialized EVACs. We're members of the Texas Regional Advisory Council, and we service the local community, the nursing homes, and local patients within the city itself. And if, if time allows, I've got a little proposal here as to what we offer the, the city of Rio Grande City, and if I can just kinda give maybe a brief overview, if it's possible?
Yes, go.
Okay. All right. What we propose to offer in all this employment represent is providing the services under here, we're duly, we are duly licensed and certified operators. We assure the city of the Rio Grande City that our response time will be within seven minutes of the time call to the scene, and which includes a, a station exit of one minute from the moment of response call comes in during the daytime hours and two minutes during the nighttime hours. We also will participate in any, any future city functions as well, and we do offer those, those services to the city. And we will provide, like I said, two ambulances, which are full-time ambulances equipped with everything, all the equipment necessary to run the 911, and it'll be, like I said, at full-time, and with an, with additional unit as a backup unit available 24/7. Plus, like we said, we do run some additional, 10 units will become available in any kind of mass casualties or, or, you know, big emergency. Also, we, in a second, we also, we're, we're, like I said, we, we do have all the insurance covers, coverage that's required by the city, and we will issue the city as well certificates of insurance. We'll offer a quality assurance and quality improvement programs to oversee some of the operations, and we will offer the employees in, in the complaint review policies and protocols as well. And so we'll be activating another EMS company as a mutual aid for, like I said, if we don't have the capacity, we will ask for mutual aid from other businesses within the community for like mass casualties or, you know, if that ever arises. We will provide also all the medical supplies for all first responders, responders for the city, as for the fire department, police department, we will supply all the medical supplies necessary. We will have a mutual aid assistance for the major city mass casualty incidents, and we will call upon, you know, some other companies within, within the surrounding areas, Ameristar EMS, EMS, St. Louis EMS, and Hidalgo EMS. We will unite the EMS, the fire department, and the police department on one major MCI, utilizing all the agents available to us. We will also hold, host, and help create the citizens' emergency respond time for the city. We will provide the ACLS, PLS, P95 respirator, FET test, and many other more trainings for all emergency responsers. And we would also provide the fire department, police department with designated infection control officer, and train others to become officers as well. These are all, a lot of services that we go above and beyond that I think that the city requires, and we're willing to do for the city as well. We will provide automated external defibrillators to all the field police vehicles, and the officers, and the A.D.s, and the first aid, and CPR as well. And also last but not least, we provide an annual rate would allow a zero subsidy service to the city. In other words, there's no charge to the city for providing our services. And that pretty much wraps up, and you know, what we have to offer, and I'd like to thank the board, and the, and the city officials, and the, and the community as well for allowing us to give us this opportunity to be here. Thank you.
You said the response time was seven minutes plus one minute, with a total of eight minutes, is that what you're...
It's a total of seven minutes, response time to the actual scene, and with a one-minute response time for the moment that calls in to leave the, exit the station during the daytime hours, and two minutes during the nighttime hours.
And as far as having units available, you said two units to cover the city, you should, at all times, or...
What, our initial intent here is to never leave the city exposed without a unit. So that's why we propose two full-time units for the city with a 24-hour, a 24-hour call on time, a third unit as well, in case there's multiple calls during the same time.
You said you've been in existence here for how long?
We've been since 2000, am I?
Aye.
I have a, I have a question, and I apologize if I missed it, 'cause I was reading your, your proposal here. In, in the event of special events like, that the city has, like concerts and baseball games and baseball tournaments and football games, and the city has some sporting events that, that they conduct with, with the boys and girls, does that include... Does that include a, a ambulance on-site for, for emergency?
On most cases for the city itself, yes. The school district, for all the functions of the school district, that's something totally separate. It may be like my partner might be, you know, better situated since they do most of those responses themselves. If you wanna give a little input reference.
Well, but, but the city, not, not the school district, but the city also has sporting events.
Okay.
Rafael Lanto, thank you for having us. Basically, this, the UIL requires for all football games to have a ambulance on-site. Now, that, that would be something different, you know, right, we're speaking right now as the city. The city that we will be, you know, providing the, the ambulances will always be covered. And let's say even the third ambulance leave, I have ten other units and personnel available. Maybe fourth, even the fifth, in case. I will never leave this, the city left alone, not again. And, you know, so about pertaining to the football games, that's something I need to sit down with, with the school district. But any other functions that the city have, they're all free of charge.
Okay, because the school also has football games.
Yes.
They have a, a.
Yes. Yes, but I'll, I'll be speaking with them later with that situation.
Okay. I guess what you may be alluding to is if it's in the, like a city park, area, not in the school district, would that be covered? Because it's being hosted by the city.
Everything will be covered.
Okay.
With no fees or anything, it's just part of the contract. You know, we just wanna serve the community better. And, you know, help you all also in the finances and, and help us as well.
Really, that's where we're leading with this is, one, is response time and, two, of course, making sure we have units available and never leave the city unprotected in a sense, which is really.
That is our, that is our intention.
Our intention. I also have four wheelchair buses and a rescue boat. So, you know, to be utilized in any situation that might, you know, come up.
Can you explain the difference between the EMS basic and the EMT A?
Uh, what was that, sir?
The difference between the EMS, EMS basic and the EMT A.
Okay, EM, EMT, advanced life support. This is basically what we are right now. This is equipped with an intermediate advanced EMT, which can basically do all the basic functions, but they can intubate and start IVs. And with an MICU, mobile intensive care unit, this is basically a paramedic equipped, which you have your cardiac monitor, your medications for the cardiac. That's basically the difference between those two.
Okay.
So we will have an advanced life support unit with MICU capabilities.
Any other questions, Commissioners, staff? Thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
We, we also have the city of Palmview. We have Chief Jerry Alanis, the city manager, Leo Olivares, and Councilman Buena, they're gonna do a presentation. But they're gonna, it's available for the city also.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Honorable Council. So I'm always happy to be back home. This is my home. And we're here to, you know, to, to present to you something that I've, I've seen firsthand, I've been doing good for our city. And it's something very important for our communities, I, I do love this community also, and this is from where I'm from. I'm the city councilman in Palmview. And I've learned a lot about this ambulance and all this stuff. But that being said, I'm gonna pass on to Chief Alanis. He's got more information on this. And thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Chief Alanis. I'm Leo Olivares, I'm the city manager in Palmview. Thank you again for having us. We have a brief presentation. We, we thank you for the opportunity to share with you what we believe is a good opportunity for both our communities. And so I'm gonna start it off and then we're gonna tag team with the Chief here. First of all, we wanna kinda go over a few items in terms of why, why municipally-owned EMS. This is an opportunity, I think, that would benefit something that we just started this past year and that's working very well for us. So we're new to this, but we believe that this is possible and achievable for Rio Grande. Then we wanna talk about, a little bit about the startup process, what it takes to get it going, and then what, what will be the next steps to make that happen. So the first issue is like, why, why do you wanna do this as municipally-owned versus privately-owned or versus, you know, hospital-based EMS? We believe that this is a way to go for us in Palmview, because this is what the rest of the world is doing in Texas. Mostly, most of metro areas have city-based EMS. That means they're city-owned and operated. And the benefit from that is that you have the faster response times because we're not dealing with non-emergency transports. We're just dealing with the nine-one-one calls. And so that's our niche and that's what we're focused on. So that, the benefit there will be the, we're able to respond faster. Also, and this is a very important one, is that you have direct control over the ambulances and the employees and the equipment. You guys are in charge, you're in the driver's seat. And so you make the decisions in terms of how many ambulances you want, where you wanna station them, how that's gonna work out. So you, you're, you're accountable to the public directly. There's no middlemen in, in this situation. And that allows you to have that accountability to the public. So again, you're cutting out any middlemen. And then another big one would be that you're able to generate some revenues depending on how you structure the, the arrangement with, with ourselves and eventually a go-alone operation for the city. And that's gonna be dependent on the payer mix, Medicare, Medicaid, all those sorts of revenue sources. At this point, we'll turn it over to George.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Chief Alanis, Palmview Fire Department. I can tell you that on the startup process, one of the big reasons why we went municipal-based EMS, not to knock any of the private sectors at all, that's not my intention whatsoever. But the fact that, for a long time, you know, we had an issue with delayed responses, things of that nature, because a lot of the times, you know, a, a lot of the units were outdoing on emergency transports, which is fine. I mean, you know, they're, everyone's entitled to how, wanna do business. But the, the mere fact is that in, in our business, right, as far as a public service, you know, when, 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 when the community calls for nine-one-one, they're not calling it to say hi, they're calling it because they need an ambulance, that then there's an emergency. And they always lean on the fire department. And that's a big reason why a lot of the metro areas have, have converted to fire-based EMS service or some type of municipal-based service for that reason, because all we do is nine-one-one response. That's our priority to ensure that there's always a unit that's gonna be available for service. And just like everybody else, you know, we have mutual contracts with other providers as well. Because obviously sometimes there's situations where you can't have enough ambulances, and that happens to everybody. But everybody works together and the common goal is to provide that service to the community. So on the startup process here, of course, you buy the ambulances. And based upon, you know, conversations and things of that nature, you would determine as far as how many units would be required for your respective cities. Done buddy?
Leave it to technology. When you least expect it.
This is not an emergency.
Chief Reyes, while we're waiting, could you just give us a little summary as to what brought us to this point that we're looking at ambulance services outside of what we currently have?
Sure. The whole reason of this is like the Chief Alanis said, we use the fire department mainly we're called to every number one call we send to the city. Most of the residents look for us to make sure they're safe and, you know, they're healthy and we're there. But what we've been encountering is that we, the response time of the local EMS, the nine-one-one provider for the city, is like sometimes lacking the response time that it should be done, you know. Many it's supposed to be from the waking of the most, because once you have a trauma patient, the oxygen level starts decreasing. So that's actually causing, you know, and makes it worse. So response time and also no response at all. So we've been encountering situations like this and our, the fire department gets there, mainly the police department gets there first and then us. A lot of times we get, you know, shootout or people start attacking us and everything. So we started even getting the blame for it. So we started seeing that we need a better service for the citizens of Rio Grande and the community. Not to say that Star County Hospital, we're not doing a good job, but we need to, I believe that we need to provide a better service for our community and citizens. We never know what might happen to one of our loved ones and, you know, we wanna make sure the service is there.
What is the current response time average right now?
You're looking at maybe between ten to fifteen minutes. And within the past, I would say the past month and a half, it's changed a little bit, not a lot. They, I believe they did some hiring and it's changed some, but, you know, it's still difficult because, you know, we encounter ambulances that not available throughout the city. And it's not only the city of Rio Grande, you also have the city of Juarez, the city of Roma, city of Batuia, that are also having the same effect as, as we speak. And, you know, everybody's now is being a concern because most of the calls that we have, about eighty percent or eighty-five percent of our calls are medical. And it's not only the Star County that's being noticing that it's along the valley, that we're being noticing that we're getting more and more calls in reference to medical stuff. So, you know, it becomes a burden in the fire department and the police department because we have to deal with the people and their reactions into it. There's no ambulance available before that hit you forever. Once you're out there and you're actually the first primary, an issue to get first aid to an individual, it seems like it's an eternity. Just two, three minutes for them, that's a hard truck. And our response time's about three to four minutes, six at the most. So for them, it feels an eternity. Imagine ten, fifteen minutes, you know, nine hundred and ninety-one of the loved ones, you know, being that, and it's pretty important. That's mainly the purpose that we brought it up, is hopefully Mr. Reyes brought it, it's a concern. You know, wanna make sure that the service is here for the, for the city and for us to provide that service.
Do you have any other statistics on that as far as how many times a month on average this happens and so on?
In a, probably in a month, it happens about four, five times that I can think of. I've worked, we're working on that study.
Four to five.
But I can tell, you know, I can tell you, you know, at least ten, fifteen times a week or more, the response time is more than ten, fifteen minutes. You know, so it, it actually affects, you know, quite a bit. We're the ones dealing with the patient, I mean, in the fire department or the police department, and we need to get the patient because it's a trauma patient or they're involved in a bad accident. So, you know, see, that's the main concern. And Star County has about eighty thousand population to, you know, to actually circle. So, you know, it's a big population and depending on how many ambulances they have available and how they run their, their operation, it's difficult. So I, I think it's time that, that we look at something to benefit the citizens of the.
You've seen the numbers and bottom line, the numbers concern you as to service is being provided.
I would like to look at a, at a time period, a study or something, because we're concentrating locally here in Rio Grande. We know we do have a traffic problem. You know, from the morning to lunchtime to the afternoon, there's big differences.
Well, Legal was involved in this. They did try to make some contact with the hospital, trying to get some numbers. And what we tried to do in the past month and a half or two that we've been working on it, we tried to see, we wanted to get a call off within a month period. So we can more or less have an idea how many calls coming to the city and what's the response time and things like that. Legal did try to make an attempt, our idea, believe that they, you know, were having some, they couldn't find. Another situation that we kinda looked into is that we're supposed to have a contract. Either it's with a private company or, or, you know, like a hospital. So Legal did also didn't attempt to do that and they weren't able to find anything on that. So you see, that's also puts us in a situation that if something happens, you know, along the line, you know, maybe just say somebody has a disease or passes away, who, the liability comes to who?
So to me, it's, there's no logging, there's no log, you know, and, and response, that, that makes a big difference for me.
Well, there's response.
The, the time to get from one place to another, I think that should be logged somewhere.
Oh, they do log it, but sometimes what happens, they, they just don't log it because they didn't respond. So you see, in our logs, in the main dispatch that we have, there's a log where the fire department goes out and the PD. So we have a log, so I'd like to say, well, PD and fire respondents were our EMS from that night.
And there's been times when there was no response?
Correct. Now, there's been, within a month, maybe three, four, five times it happens.
That there was no response?
No response at all. And we have been documented through our main dispatch that the hospital calls us and says, you know what? Send the fire department or whatever, because we don't have a lot of this. And besides, the fire department, there are other patients. So we have to kinda readjust our operation and try to see what the next thing to, to, to do. There's been times that we've had to call private companies to come and assist us to, you know, when it's taking a patient or whatever, because we don't have the mobility or the equipment to transport that patient to a hospital.
Is, is that allowed to the city? If you were to transport somebody, something were to happen to that individual, would that be allowed to the city?
Yes. The liability will fall out, for example, we do transport, there's an accident involved, there's a patient, something happens, gets injured along the way to transport. The, 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 the individual, so the, the parents of the individual, the patient could come back and hold the city.
So that itself is a big concern.
Yes. After doing some research around the valley, what we came up with is that we're supposed to have a contract with somebody. Either a private company or we're supposed to hold our own. So if we're doing a, having like the local, like Star County Hospital, Hospital doing our service, and the city is an entity separated from the county, because there are independent district hospitals and districts. So if something happens, they can hold us liable with negligence to provide a service that they're supposed to provide.
May I just let him finish?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chief. I know we, technology back up, sir. Hopefully we won't go back down.
Not a problem, Mayor.
We'll extend the time, sir, don't worry.
No problem. Not a problem. So going back to the presentation, so this, how, how the, how the startup process works. So one, we discussed, you know, based on your needs with, with your fire administration and city administration, the amount of ambulances that would be needed to service your community. Number two, then, is order all the equipment supplies and of course certify the units to the Texas Department of State Health Services at the Mobile Intensive Care Unit, which is the highest level of service that the state of Texas has certified. Currently, Palmview Fire EMS is a full MICU service. We do not run below MICU. We don't have a param, like for example, if a paramedic were to call in sick one day, we hire overtime for a paramedic, you know, to have, to make sure that that unit has a paramedic on staff twenty-four seven. So that's at the highest level that we would be running that. And which we run that, and which would be, we would be running that within, within your community as well. And of course, the personnel, right, through, again, through your fire administration and your city administration. We would hire based on your needs here from within your community, things of that nature. Because of course, you know, your people that live in your community know your community. And we would, hence going back to working to a partnership where you have a direct impact as far as personnel goes and things of that nature. So we will work with you all on that as well. And of course, you know, how the ambulance would be staffed, again, with at least one EMT basic and of course one paramedic on the truck. On the operations, we would be working hand-in-hand with your fire administration to ensure that, again, direct control of the service. You know, if there's something that we need to tweak, if there's something that needs to be different, you know, we would be working with them. If we need to add more units, as an example, once you get into it, you know, then add more units and personnel, things of that nature. Because without the statistics, you know, knowing what's going on, you know, we would have to rely on, on, on information that we have, you know. So once we actually get into it, because I can use us as an example. We got a certain number once we started, but once we actually got into it, that number was a lot higher as far as the amount of calls that were coming through our nine-one-one center. So I can foresee that happening with you. You might not know exactly how many calls are coming through your nine-one-one center. So I can foresee that happening with you. You know, you might not know exactly how many calls are coming through your nine-one-one center. You, you only get a certain amount of calls because that's where your fire department responds to. But you may not know the exact amount of calls that the EMS, that your current EMS provider responds to because they respond to a lot more than just what the fire department does. And that's what happened was we, 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 uh, made our determination based upon the information that we had available. And we quickly found out that the call volume was a lot more than what was, uh, initially anticipated. So hence, we are, we're, we're staffing up again and we're ordering more units for our own community as well because we see the need that's there as well. Especially after annexations as well, that call volume has gone up. So we're growing with the, with the growth of the community. And of course, we will work with your fire administration to develop the protocols and your standard operating procedures for the service again for your city, uh, service as well. The building, we would guide you all through the process as well on how to develop, uh, as far as, uh, what are the pros and cons of in-house building and what are the pros and cons of outsourcing it? We would help you all, uh, based upon our experiences, uh, these are the, these are your, are your different options, you know, and then you can set it up from there as well. The revenue sources, uh, of course Medicare has us, has, uh, uh, rates change every year, you know, and we want to make sure, you know, that, you know, uh, whatever building company we procure, if you do outsource it or if you, or, or if you have it in-house and ensure that you're building at the proper, uh, rate and everything is good on the Medicare and the Medicaid and your private insurances, that all your paperwork's in line as well. That way, uh, every transport you have to ensure that the proper building is done accordingly and that, uh, you, uh, do, uh, uh, have all that in place of, to have a proper billing procedures in place as well. And then of course, you know, uh, like I was saying about the, about the, uh, about the private billing companies and, and as far as the private insurance, things of that nature. And then step number six would be collections. Of course, after you have your billing procedures in place and everything of that nature, you do have some patients that don't have any type of insurance, but that would be a city call as far as if you wanted to collect on that's, on the, on the, on, uh, patients that don't have insurance. And then you know how, for example, if you have a copay and your insurance covers a certain portion of it, that would be the city's, uh, judgment call at that point in time, whether you want to collect on the uncollected. But those are the decisions that would be made at the city level. But again, we can give you the pros and cons as far as, you know, what we've gone through and our experiences and things of that nature. And of course the quality control. Uh, it's a, quality control is a never anything. You want to make sure that your service is, is operated at the highest level possible. You want to make sure that, uh, that it's being managed accordingly. You want to make sure that it's being run effectively and efficiently. That's the most important thing. Uh, the community will embrace it like it has embraced us. Uh, our community, of course, just like Rio Grande City, you know, uh, everybody comes to the fire department, you know. They have a water leak, they come to the fire department. They have a cat in the tree, we, we talk about it, right? But they have a cat in the tree, they call the fire department. They get something stuck, they call the fire department. And so it's kind of like the fire departments, like the one-two-go-stop-shop in any city, doesn't matter where you go to, right? And, uh, with that said, you know, the public entrusts the fire department with so much. And having your own in-house, city-based, uh, service would definitely, you know, uh, make the public feel so much safer because they know that it's fire department based and they love the fire department. I mean, that's everywhere. So that's one of the big things, you know, and the public has really embraced us, uh, in our community. And, uh, we have gotten so many calls and I'll, I'll tell you one thing that, uh, we had, uh, we, in our city, we average about no more than a five and a half minute response time, depending what part of the city it is. And, uh, we had a cardiac arrest, which is a patient that was non-responsive and we were able to bring that patient back because it just happened that, uh, it was only a couple of blocks down the street and we were there about three and a half minutes. So we were on it quick and the patient survived and there's nothing more gratifying than getting a phone call, you know, from the family members, you know, thank you for saving my dad's life. And that's what it's all about, saving lives, you know, and, and, uh, that's the whole goal and the objective behind it. The other thing that you can do as well was called, uh, the ambulance advisory board where you can have a separate board and you regulate all of your EMS, uh, companies within your city limits, things of that nature. That's something that we're fixing to do in our city. Uh, McAllen, uh, Westlaco, uh, Mission have, have, have the advisory boards. That way you have direct control to ensure that, you know, you, you set the restrictions and you set, you know, the, the requirements of how you want services within your city limits as well. And of course, that's, that's our unit right now. Of course, uh, you would have, oh, you would do what's called a D B A. And instead of having Palmview on that, you're going to have Rio, Rio Grande City Emergency Medical Services. So all, all your stuff would be on that unit, but that's just how ours looks like. And with that, I'll pass it over to our city manager. Thank you very much, Mayor. Does it count for any questions that may happen?
How many years have y'all been in operation with the?
We're going on a year in February.
One year?
Yes, sir. And, uh, like I said, you know, we, we found out real quick that the call volume, because we, we weren't in the same boat you all are. So we, we weren't sure as far as how many calls other than the fire department responsible there. And we found out real quick within the first month and a half, two months, that it was three times as much as what we were going to. So that's what we're, we're, uh, we're starting to begin on that.
And I want to underscore a few things that Chief mentioned is that first of all, in terms of we're running a top-notch operation and we're starting it from ground zero because we could have decided to run, uh, advanced life support ambulances in terms of the equipment. We're getting the mobile ICU intensive care units. So we're at the very top of equipment. We have paramedics on board and so we're, we're making sure we start it at the top. And so that's something that we're very proud of. Uh, the other thing is, is that in terms of the accountability, uh, we, you, the, the city can create these ambulance advisory boards. Uh, and that allows you to appoint citizens to hold any ambulances that are operating in your city accountable. And you set the standards in terms of response times, equipment, personnel. So it gives you control of that. Because again, you want to make sure that the public is safeguarded and they have the right, uh, responders there. So that's, that's optional whether you do it, uh, whether you, whether you continue to go with a hospital district, a private company or even another city or a joint venture, you can do that already. And, and that will allow you to kind of monitor that activity. So the last part of this section, we'll answer questions after this is, so if the council decides to move forward with this, where do we start? We see three phases here. The first phase is where we would come in, uh, we would enter, 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 in, uh, enter into an inter-local agreement. Uh, you wouldn't have to go through an R F P process. Uh, this is governed by the, uh, Interlocal Agreement Act. Uh, and so we can start rather quickly once we'd negotiate terms. Uh, and then the, our, our units would be, uh, we would purchase the equipment, we would hire the staff. It would be the city of Palmview's employees, but we could work out some type of arrangement where the city, what your city would recommend who to hire. Um, as long as they meet the requirements, then we would have no issues with, with hiring them. But this would be a, a Palmview-based operation. Uh, we would notify the public, as Chief mentioned, on the units. It would say, uh, city of Palmview in smaller print, but it would have the city of Rio Grande logo because you guys are the ones providing, uh, the service. But there are licenses because we've gone through that process and it takes a little time. So that would be a better way to move faster, quicker. Uh, and so that, that's how the arrangement would work under phase one. Under phase two, we, we would begin the transition where we, like mentioned in the presentation, start developing the protocols, uh, and, and this updating the standard operating procedures. Um, and, and transition into having Rio Grande itself run the operation, which would be the final phase. We would kind of stand back and, and let you guys, uh, run your own operation. Uh, so depend, we can structure this however many years you'd like, uh, have Palmview involved. Uh, depending on the, the, uh, break in, in terms of the revenue split. Because there is, there's some funds that could be used for the general fund, uh, to enhance the general fund. Uh, so if, if, uh, there is a, an urgency to have Rio Grande get more involved earlier, then we would need to, uh, make sure that we are having enough revenues to pay out the investment we made upfront. But if you want to have more money upfront in terms of revenues, then, then we would, we could work it out that way as well. So we're here to make something work for you guys. Uh, one thing I'll add also, there's been a lot of talk about the hospital and where their role is with the, with the, with the valley. And something that's, I think that's very, this, this community should be very proud of is that we created a hospital district in the nineteen seventies. That's something that was ahead of the time for the rest of the valley. So that was a great, uh, I guess, stroke of genius and, and showing leadership for the rest of the valley. They never did it. We did it here in Star County. And so that's something that we should be proud of. But there has been a publicly provided ambulance-based service here. The public has been doing it through the hospital district. I, it's my opinion that I think it should stay publicly based. Whether it's a hospital or the city, that's the way to go because you have that accountability to the public. And so that's kind of where we are with this. Uh, be happy to entertain any, any questions and, and work with, uh, writing some options for, for Rio Grande and for Palmview.
I have a question, Mr. Givares. Uh, what would be the timeframe to complete, uh, something like this for this city?
We could be operational in about four months. If, once we have a, a, a agree on terms, uh, then we can, and ink the con, the inter-local agreements, uh, we would move forward to get, you know, people hired, the equipment ordered, licensed. It takes some time, but we turn around our operation in, in about four months.
And you mentioned that employees would be from, uh, Palmview is, uh, would that be the case during the, the term of the contract? Or would the city be able to hire locals?
Well, they, they would in all likelihood be, and again, we don't really care in terms of where they're coming as long as they're equipped. Ever they're, they're trained and certified. The reality is makes sense to have locals because in terms of commute times. So they should be local. But, uh, again, depending on how we arrange it, we would, we'd rather have the council or the city involved to recommend some applicants and, and, and as long as the candidates feed the qualifications and then, yeah, we would certainly go that route.
If I can, if I can, as to that, our intention is to, uh, city of Palmview is gonna have them, you know, on the program. Our suggestion is to hire locals. So that way, when we decide to do the transition, but obviously they have to be, meet their criteria when we do the transition, let the local individuals from here. Not trying to have individuals or, and I don't try to get anything away from Palmview, but I think that's available, that's reasonable. That would have offered a bit more jobs for individuals both in here and that which they fit within the department and then the.
And that's something that's going to have to change for the job description for the city because right, that would be dual certification for fire and for EMS. That's something that's not required right now, Chief, in terms of their.
It is required, uh, because of the service we provide. I was saying earlier that normally the fire department will call and make calls, but it's a minimum basic certification. Once we jump to an M I C U unit, we bump them all the way to permanent. Obviously that the job description is going to change, so other things have to change for them. Because they're getting, you know, uh, what we're looking at more than is, we already have a hundred percent E M T base, our, our, our department. So that's a real good plus and a big step wherever you talk. So instead of terms taking a year and a half or two years to get them off to the level that we need them, it's kind of probably Texas less. But you see, it's going to take us about eight, one to ten months to the time we get there, to get them all the way to the permanent.
Because on the basis of the days, the people that would be hired for the, for the service, what, what in your community, what's stable in your community, because eventually they're going to be those employees as well. So that makes it much easier for the transition.
And feasibility as far as timeframe for a transition, what, what are we looking at as far as years?
Uh, that would depend on, on the terms and, and term, uh, the specifics of the, uh, investment for the financials, you know, the equipment, uh, the vehicles, uh, the training. So, uh, we want to make sure that it's something that's, uh, agreeable to both communities.
Right.
But, uh, we, we would like to eventually see Rio Grande do its own service.
So let's say three to five years.
Yes, I think that would be realistic.
Any other questions, commissioners?
No, nothing. It's very interesting. Thank you for your time. And I think that this needs to be continued like in a workshop setting where we can go into the details of the specifics.
Financials and so on.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. Thank you. Chief Perez, anything else in closing?
I want to thank Trank Star and the Fire Department and the staff and also the city of Palmview for coming, doing the presentation for us and giving us the proper information that we need. Uh, I guess hopefully in the next, in the future, we can have a workshop and go more into detail on what, you know, is the best we can do.
Yeah, thank you to Trank Star and the city of Palmview for coming out and presenting. This is definitely something that, uh, we need a little bit of time to look at. And, uh, so far, from what I'm seeing here, the services are, are great. And again, going back to the quality of service and response time, which is really where our interest is and obviously you all's interest as well. So, thank you.
Thank the councilman for coming. Thank the councilman for coming.
Oh, that's right, of course, councilman. Uh, thank you so much. You're kind of hiding in there. Thank you for visiting us. Of course, you're home.
This is home and I want to really thank everybody for giving us the opportunity to come do this presentation. It's a very important, you know, item of, of, it's about life, like the chief said. And it's something that's going to be, you know, uh, transferred into hiring your own people. That's, that's the most important thing. You hire your, your own people that you're going to have from locals and having your own ambulance service. I mean, you, you guys will be the boss. You know, you, you will own the, the, you know, you were just saying about the games and stuff, you're, you're going to be able to have control over that. And like I said, I've been seeing them, you know, witnessing it firsthand and it's something that we're very proud of. And that's why we came to share with, with.
How many units does Palmview have? Two or three or?
We're going to have two in a couple of months. We get the second one.
In case one goes down, mechanical issues, you all have like a backup plan for that?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Let me just add that you would be the, I guess it's the fifth city.
The third.
The fifth city in the valley to provide the service. McAllen doesn't do it, Harlingen doesn't do it. It's South Padre Island, Brownsville, Westlaco and Palmview are the only cities that provide dual certification.
And Lee would show us over the way we, he had, you know, do a lot of homework. And he presented a lot like this and we're glad, you know, we're, we're very happy that we, we took the, the device.
Very good.
Took the plunge, Commissioner. So wholeheartedly, you went after it. All right.
That's right.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
So Mayor, we need direction on.
Mr. Givares. Can, can y'all please leave your, I didn't see a contact, uh, uh, information on the.
My approach to that.
Thank you, Leo.
Thank you. Y'all need some direction and?
Yeah, like, uh, if you'd like to, I mean, I'd like to propose just a mini workshop so that you can get, um, more details, some cost on both sides from the private versus bringing it in-house. And so a decision can be made going forward.
Yes, sir.
I agree. I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, conducted many workshops so we can get more information.
I second.
There you have a second by Commissioner Cortez. Almost in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That was right of five.
B.
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 Next, uh, business and orders, item five C, presentation and discussion regarding High Trampoline Park and receive commission's direction for staff regarding the city.
Good evening, Mayor, commissioners.
Good evening.
What are you guys doing?
So good.
Very, very. Well, I'm here to present Ultimate High Trampoline Park. As you all know, it's the new entertainment venue here in Rio Grande. Uh, my name is Juan Barrera. Our address is forty-five seventy-four East Highway eighty-three, the old Sears Building, as everybody knows it. So, uh, we're close by here. Uh, I have a little presentation for you guys just to let you all know because we already opened our doors to the public, May the fifth was our official opening day. Uh, we're, we're glad that the city was able to help us out with the opening. I want to thank the city manager for having a good staff, uh, chief, uh, and the planning department for helping us out and guiding us in how to follow the regulations for the city to keep it safe and an enjoyable environment. Uh, let me get started with the first slide for you guys. Uh, as y'all know, we're open, our hours are operation right now. We started off with from four to nine during the week, Monday to Thursday. Uh, keeping in mind the students, uh, once the school starts again, uh, that way they're not out too late. Friday nights is our, is when we do stay from four to twelve. Uh, keep a little bit more entertainment for the adults and that's when we have more specials. And the other slides I'll show you guys. Uh, Saturday is from twelve to twelve and our Sundays is from twelve to nine. So we're opening up seven days a week. We are planning on respecting the, of the holidays that we have to. Uh, but other than that, we, we do want to provide a lot of opening days for the community. Any questions so far on this? Comments? All right, our mission statement, our mission is to promote a safe and healthy environment for all ages. As y'all see there, we got our staff. Uh, that's our staff right now. On the next slide, I want to show you how many staff we, we've hired. And, uh, right here we have a, the basic point is, what's a trampoline park? And many of us grew up with a trampoline outside on our backyard. And when I, when we first started this venture, our partners and myself, we didn't know what a trampoline park was until we actually went out to one. Uh, in McAllen, that was the first one that we ever attended. So trampoline parks are growing and are gaining, uh, popularity around the communities. Now ours is special because ours is considered a family entertainment center. Because we're providing more than a trampoline park, we're providing an area for snacks, an area for food, an area for the adults to sit down and enjoy beverage. Uh, we're providing arcades. That's what we have in plan and that's what we have been doing. So that's why ours is considered an entertaining center as well. We also have a, uh, a little dance hall next, right next to the trampoline park. It's a six, seven thousand square foot entertainment dance hall that, uh, that's available also for the, for the public. So that's why, that's why we're different from a regular trampoline park, as if you all been to one. Uh, Ultimate High is the only entertainment center of its kind within a hundred mile radius. Well, we're basically off the valley and off Laredo. Uh, the closest one here is gonna be, they're, we do it Sky Park there in Mission, uh, but they don't offer the same, the same entertainment as we do. So that's why we're, we're unique and that's why we did, that we decided to do something different to Rio Grande. And I have a little video for you guys, hope the link works. This link here is gonna show you all. Is your audio? The process of how I looked, how it started from the ground up. We actually, uh, employed about twenty, twenty labor workers to build it for about a month. It shows a step from the colors, from the, the color of the mats to the building of the mat. And the steps that we follow all the ASTM standards to keep the safety involved. And at the end, it should show you how the party was looking, how it should be ended. All the netting around is for safety nets, uh, like the nut chair or ordering type of net from the outdoor trampolines. We're using ASTM standard nets. Uh, they're hung from the, from the ceiling and, and strapped down. As y'all can see, that attraction one that says wipeout, I believe the mayor already saw it there, that attraction, nobody has it around here. I believe the closest one is in Austin, from the company where we, we purchased it from. That's the closest park that has that. That's a, the wipeout is still going? Again, again, stop it. Yeah. Can't do anything about it? We'll go to the next slide. Technology again.
It's great.
Well, part of the video there was, our intention was to show you guys how we built it, the standards that we followed. Uh, I do, I do know that several, several employees went by there to see how we were building and keeping the safety in mind, electricity. Everything was engineered, uh, out in South Carolina to, to, I've actually charred for about a week out there to design the whole process to fit our needs and it was based off our, our population, our census, and that's how we decided to, based off the size. Now, one of the product considerations that we offer, we have a main jump area. That's where the majority of the kids go. We have a dodgeball court, uh, we have a foam pit. That was, that was a great idea for basketball players when they jump in there and they jump out in, in the pits. Uh, we got the jump and dunk also. Kids love it there, they like to practice their dunks. Uh, got a, and, uh, one indoor batting cage, something that we needed around here, an indoor. And we got a party area, we got a snack bar. So we, we are offering a lot of stuff in there for everybody. Uh, as you see here, these are our packages. Uh, we, we made a Wednesday family pack, uh, that's the most affordable one, one of the being ones that we offer like today. Family of five can go out and enjoy two hours out there, food and drinks for eighty-five dollars. That was one of the big bargains out there. Actually saving sixty-six dollars every time they go out there on a Wednesday. And the reason why we're staying late, uh, as you can see on Rock and Jump, that's where we turn off the lights and make it like a little disco type for the, for the adults and, and the kids from nine to twelve and they just pay twenty-five dollars there. That's another savings versus paying a regular price till they get one more extra hour. So we're, we found ways to give back to the community and we also got these specials coming out, uh, to encourage more people to go out there because we, uh, we feel that we need to make it affordable and have something for the kids to do, especially on Fridays. Uh, we know that the kids walking around from the movies to Peter Piper has gone down a bit because they're actually, they stay there with us or they go to Peter Piper. They're actually somewhere, not just mingling around and getting in trouble. So that was one of our main concerns why we wanted to do this project.
I noticed you have not denim allowed, is that for a reason?
Yeah, that's a safety reason. Uh, the trampolines actually do last longer from their lifetime and because some, some jeans do have like those little butt ends or the, that little, uh, Miss Me jeans or other things, the ones with the little diamonds on them, stuff like that, fashion. Those actually do rip the trampolines with time and that could cause it. And when we were building this one, just to be, just to add a bit more, we actually are one of the only ones I believe here in the valley with a second redundant mat, which means that if our trampoline were, were to rip, there's a second one to catch in the bottom. And that's another safety that, that we put our, put our mind into. It did cost a bit more, but we wanted to go that route. So that's one of the good things about it. Any questions here?
Are these prices pretty much standard or are you following a certain?
We based it off an average of from, from Laredo to McAllen and we are about three, 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 four dollars less on, on certain things, on certain, um, especially on our party packs, I don't, we didn't put a slide there, we are saving about fifty, sixty dollars on party packs, uh, for the kids, uh, for our birthday parties and that's one of our big hits on the weekends. So we are, we are showing competitors there. And one thing that we are doing for the little league that we did for the city was that we had several teams go by and wanna rent out the batting cage. So we did special one-hour sessions for them with batting, uh, for their batting cage and they got their batting practice in, that, that the coaches were gonna go in, uh, for a lot of affordable price, like, I think we did like two dollars a round and, and we give an extra on each kid, so like for six dollars, they got to bat four rounds. So it was a pretty good deal for all the teams and we did it for the, for the, from T-ball coach pitch and, and the minors here at the park.
On, on the party packs, uh, do they have like a, a certain area where it's solely for that party or is it all just mixed?
No, no, we do have a, a certain area and, and I'll show you right on this slide.
Party.
Yeah. Not a room, we didn't wanna go the concept of a private room. We wanted to do an open concept, but everybody's designated their own areas. And we have areas for the, for your public to go in, as you guys see there in the pictures. Uh, we got our foam pit with a diving board, we've got our arcade section with a mechanical bowl or snack bar. Uh, the party areas there, like in, depending on the amount of size of your party, that's the amount of tables that you get. And, and it's a pretty good size of tables and chairs because, uh, the, like the minimum is at least thirty chairs that, that, that we reserve for the, for each party. And as you all see, our batting cage in the door there. Any comments, questions down here?
How many parties can you hold at, on the same day?
On the same day, we can hold four, four parties every two hours. That, that's our, our limit. And, or at times we might stretch it out for an hour, for an extra hour, like it ought to be in the party. But it's a, um, in the day, let's say in six hours, time span, you do about a good twelve parties.
How's your attendance thus far?
It's sort of really good. And then June, it kind of took a little slope and then it, and, and it came back, it, it came back up. Now in July, we are seeing a little slope there because of the vacation and I know people getting ready, uh, for school. Some of us are already buying clothes. Uh, but I foresee that once we hit August already, that people are already back into routines, it'll catch up again. But we do have a lot of birthday parties scheduled, uh, throughout the year, starting from August and on. Uh, so we do foresee a good, a good turnout. That's our managing team. Uh, my father is one of the partners, Juan Barrera, my mother, Lorena, myself and my sister. Uh, we're all local school teachers and my father's the only one who's a self-employed who owns, provides adult daycare. So, uh, we're local, we're a local establishment built, built by local citizens. And investment right now, we got twenty-six part-time employees plus the former managing staff. We're looking at about fifteen thousand a month in, uh, in wages that are being paid. Our projected sales tax revenues is either between seventy-five to eighty thousand a year roughly. And projected property taxes, uh, forty thousand was an actual number that we did pay this past year, uh, in, in, in order to get started when we purchased the, the building. So that's what we got to offer in the city. As you, as you all know, the predictive revenue is a pretty good number, uh, that the city will get back part of it. Uh, any questions there?
I had the privilege of, of going by there a couple of times when you were building the.
I remember.
When it was going up in pieces and everything and I was pretty much impressed, you know, and, uh, I've gone into one of these places back in Florida. For my age, you know, I, I felt the pain the following day, but I think it's something great. I think it's something great for the city, you know.
Thank you.
And I'm, you know.
Are you saying them to work?
You better have insurance if you get into one.
So y'all are wanting to try it out anytime, you guys wanna go by there, uh, take a tour of the place. I really would, would like to send a, an invitation to you all to go out there one day, have lunch and, and check it out.
Has there been any accidents?
We had some minor, uh, sprains here and there. We've had a couple of broken arms, uh, but it all comes back to the way the, the landing. Uh, some kids jump and they landed the wrong place. But one thing that we did best was, uh, high-quality padding, uh, compared to the rest of trampoline parks. Our, our pads are at least a minimum of four inches thick. So it is pretty good padding where we have, uh, accidents will happen, it's part of the, part of the business. Uh, they will happen, but we are certified. Uh, my employees, they all got a one-week extensive training, uh, from this, a personal trainer from the company. Uh, we follow all the, the standards, uh, so we're pretty well-prepared. And our next slide, I just wanna thank you guys for the time. Uh, we look forward to working with you all, the city and the EDC and I want to thank, uh, Ms. Guillen on that. Ms. Guillen, thank you very much for helping me out with this presentation and Melinda, thank you all for the time. And, uh, anything else that you guys would like to talk about, let us know and you all are invited.
Thank you. Submit a proposal as far as what it is that you're asking for?
I will get together with, with Ms. Guillen on that one and we'll have something for you all.
Okay.
Just let, uh, as soon as we have it, we'll get it to you.
Very good. Thank you.
Alright, thank you guys.
Have you all traded up? Have you all traded up? Have you all traded up?
I have my, uh, grandchild, my two-year-old granddaughter's birthday party, and the kids all have that.
Mr. Barrera will offer a free pass to Star Cycle Club as a result.
Remember the moment that I had to mention this over? And y'all invited, uh, anytime, uh, there's, um, one hour, remember, it's like thirty works in. It was great, guys.
Wait, did I hear a free pass or did I? Hey, I tried, guy. Thank you, Mr. Barrera. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, uh, business in order is item five D, presentation by linebacker Gogan Blair and Sampson, Status of Delinquent Tax Collections.
Good evening, mayor, commissioners, just for the record, Michael Connel, partner with linebacker, and as you know, we're delinquent tax attorneys. Uh, before I get to the boring details of, of property taxes, I just want to commend you all for passing that resolution on the anti-smoking. Um, actually, I smoked since I was sixteen years old, at least a pack a day, if not two packs a day, since I was forty-two, which was last year, and it was because of this movement and I wish Ms. Weisfeld was still here. She had a group of individuals and it was, it was young citizens, you know, some, some students in the city fire area that approached me because I was outside smoking before a city meeting. And after smoking for twenty-six years, that really, what they had to tell me actually made me quit, so I've been smoke-free for a year and a half. So the resolution you passed is real. The movement is real, the effects are real, so I want to applaud you all for passing that. Um, now I'll get to the boring details of, of what we do for the city. Obviously, we're delinquent tax attorneys and I'm here just to represent, or to present what we've done for the past nine months, which is three quarters of the year. Um, I apologize that I don't have a, a, a PowerPoint slide like some of the previous presenters, but I believe you have our presentation in your packet. I'll try to be as brief as possible because I think, uh, most of y'all know how we do our work and it is basically we reach out to all the, the city residents who have a tax balance, you know, who have an outstanding delinquent tax balance and, uh, we reach them by telephone, uh, we reach them by mail and, uh, we even have a knock, what we call a knock and talk program. Uh, my, one of my senior and my best collectors in the firm is Mr. Clint Brown, who's obviously here from the Rio Grande city area. Uh, he actually goes out, meets with your residents and tries to work out some type of a payment arrangement. We understand that a lot of your taxpayers can't pay their taxes in full, you know, at this point in time, that's why they're delinquent. And so it's, it's always our goal just to get them into some type of payment, uh, arrangement and Mr. Clint Brown's been very success, uh, successful in doing that. Uh, you'll see that when it becomes necessary, obviously sometimes we do have to file lawsuits to collect those delinquent taxes that's owed to the city. Uh, this past nine months, we filed forty-two new lawsuits, trying to collect just over seventy thousand dollars and we presently represent the city, uh, in over a hundred and eighty, a hundred and eighty lawsuits, uh, trying to collect just over half a million dollars. I think Mr. Virial and Ms. Florida can attest to the fact that, you know, we've really increased our presence and the pressure that, that we're putting on the local, not only the city, but the school and Starr County residents in a very fair manner in trying to increase their collections, uh, for the city and, and the school and the county as well. Uh, on page, uh, you'll see that we also sometimes it becomes necessary to sell properties. Uh, and I, and I want to slow down here when I talk about tax foreclosures because I think anytime you mention foreclosures, it has a negative connotation to it. Uh, we're not like the mortgage lenders, we're not displacing families from their homes. Uh, I'll represent to you that most people who owe delinquent taxes in the city want to stay in their homes and they do work with us and we're a lot more amendable than the mortgage companies are, so we do not displace families from their designated homesteads. If it is their homestead, it's designated as a homestead, we really go to great lengths to work with those taxpayers, uh, to make sure that they can stay in their house, uh, even though they have a tax balance. Uh, what we really target are the, the, what we call, you know, bad properties or the ISOR properties in the community and this is where the, the, the tax foreclosure tool can become very beneficial to the city. Anytime the city has, you know, an abandoned property or, you know, property where it may be, you know, you may have a landlord that's leasing it out to a tenant, the landlord gets rent every month but doesn't pay his taxes. In those situations, we also foreclose on those because the tenants can go and rent from someone else. So we have displaced some people from homes that are leasing, but not if they actually own the home as their homestead. So when we started that process, we've actually had a, we had a tax, uh, uh, sale earlier this year and we just had one this month as well, which those, since we're not including July, we did not include those in this report. But you'll see that, uh, sometimes in, in the first tax, we only sold one property, but we had some that were paid just before we actually had the sale, we had some payment arrangements. And the important number here is that struck off thirteen. What that basically means is we failed, the very first time we put up a property for, for sale, the tax code mandates that we start the bid at the amount of taxes owed or the appraised value of the property. Many times, these properties will not sell that first time because the price is kind of high and investors are not gonna pay full price for a property like that. So we'll go back and resell it, but this is a process that we have to go through. So we, we sell it the first time, it doesn't get sold. Now the city, along with the school and the county, the property has been struck off to you all. Now you guys own the property for the most part in trust with all the other taxing entities. What we do is we wait six months. You know, we hold it for six months because it was a six-month ride of redemption that those properties have. So if the, if the person wants to come and, and, and pay off the taxes and redeem it, then they can do that within six months. After six months, we'll put those properties up for resale and at that point, we can accept just the highest bid like a traditional auctioneer. They'll start at a high price and they'll start coming down till we receive a bid and they'll go back up. And that's really the best way to maximize the amount of recovery that we get for that, that property. Uh, I know I was speaking to Mr. Brown and he's been, you know, working with Mr. Pettis very closely on two different fronts. One, I think Mr. Pettis, uh, has, has, uh, has expressed to, to Mr. Brown that he wants to start targeting some of these, you know, downtown properties, some of these ISOR properties that are not being maintained. And the city has two options at that point. Either you can go down the condemnation process, which can be kind of costly for the city, or you can, if they owe delinquent taxes, which for the most part they are, the property's not being taken care of, ninety-nine percent chance they're not paying their taxes. You can use us to do that tax foreclosure and we do it at no additional cost and we only, and we get paid fifteen percent of what we collect. So once we go through that process, the amount of money that we collect is obviously reduced if we end up selling at a reduced price, but we look at the bigger picture and that is really to get these properties back on the active tax rule. Get them sold, put them in the hands of someone who's gonna maintain the property, pay the tax on a, on a yearly basis and then obviously increase the, the taxable value to the city. So that's what our tax sale program's all about. Again, I always want to caution, you know, the taxing entities that we're not kicking people out of their homes. We're not, I'm not saying we're not the bad guys, but I think the mortgage companies are not afraid to displace families. We're kind of a little bit more, we're just more amendable in working with these taxpayers and giving them more favorable terms if we understand that that's where they live. This past nine months, we've collected just over a quarter million dollars. We're at two-hundred-and-forty-six thousand dollars, three-hundred-and-sixty-four cents. That is a slight decrease from where we were last year, but only because last year, we actually had a couple of big payoffs. But it's still our target to match what we collected last year, if not exceed it. And I'm very confident within the last quarter, which is when we have a really big push, this July first is when the new delinquent tax year for us came through. We're going to see an increase, and hopefully we'll, I'm fairly confident we'll finish this year with a positive. Again, we had a fairly good year last year, and I'm fairly confident that we'll match it again this year.
How does your activity level compare to last year? I understand the dollar side is slightly different, but you going after these properties in numbers. How does that compare with previous activities?
It's increased. I don't have the actual numbers with you, but I think, again, the other two attorneys in the room can tell you that I'm here on a much more frequent basis. And just to, let me digress a little bit. I personally took over, you know, the Starr County account and all the accounts within Starr County about a year ago, last summer. And we've really ramped up the amount of lawsuits that we're filing every month. We've ramped up the number of judgments that we take every month. And again, I think the two attorneys here can attest to the fact that they see me a lot more often here than my predecessor was because we're ramping up the pressure, but we're doing it very ethically. So I don't, I can get you the numbers to show you the difference between last year and this year, where you will see a phenomenal increase aside from the lawsuits. Filing lawsuits, kind of the easy part, is where we're doing our tax sales. Again, because even though we take a reduced amount of money when we sell these properties, there's a big benefit to the city, and here's what happens. The school district obviously wants to collect its taxes, but the city has the responsibility of the safety and the welfare of the citizens. So if there's a property that's not being maintained, they don't call the school district, they call the city. So the city has to send its mowing crew out there if it's an empty lot or a weedy lot, what have you. So it's a very heavy burden for the city, even though the school gets the larger tax portion of the bill. So this is where we start to work very close with the cities, and I'm glad to hear that Clint Brown and Mr. Pettis are doing that, start identifying these properties because let's clean up the city. And there's also a lot of value in putting properties up for sale because we advertise, you know, we have to advertise in the local paper. Your residents see that properties are going up for sale for non-payment of taxes. When your residents drive down the street, they see our big yellow signs, tax foreclosure. So all of that activity, even though it's not a lawsuit, just the process, either taking judgments and selling these properties, actually has a very good benefit to us as a firm in collecting because it tells people that it's real. If you don't pay up, your property may have a, you know, yellow sign on it, and it will get sold for non-payment of taxes. So I apologize, I don't have the actual numbers to show you the difference, but I can get you that to show you where we were last year to this year.
I would like to see the last four years. What have been the collection efforts, let's say, the last four years to compare between four years ago to today?
We can certainly do that.
Please.
Right, and I'll do it not only on the collection side, because you can't really look at collections in a vacuum. What you want to look at is also is your delinquent tax balance, because that kind of tends to go up and down. From last year to this year, I think it went up slightly. I'm not so sure what happened in the previous years, but, Mayor, I'll definitely do that. And I think that's very, you know, that's very beneficial because it gives you, anytime you take a step back and look at the bigger picture, it helps you understand what trends are going on, so I'll certainly get you that information.
Really, because, again, I want to look at the numbers, because, of course, like the phone calls, we can have all these phone calls, but at the end, does it produce, is there any fruit to that? So, again, what is the actual number that at the end of the day, we're actually collecting?
I agree. At the end of the day, and not only does, the bottom line is important to the city, it's important to us because that's how we get paid. We get paid fifteen percent of what we collect, so if we don't collect any money, then we don't get paid. And just to be as transparent as possible, obviously, we've collected two-hundred-and-forty-six thousand. Our take is fifteen percent, so I think we've gotten paid about thirty-six, thirty-seven thousand dollars off of, you know, the money that we've collected for the city. But that number that I'm reporting to you, the two-hundred-and-forty-six thousand, one-hundred percent of that is turned over to the city, and then what, the fifteen percent that we charge is charged to the delinquent taxpayer, and when they pay, they pay our fees. So at no time, and this is very important, because at no time do our fees get paid out of the city's revenue, nor do any of your taxpayers who pay on time, which is an overwhelming majority of your taxpayers, none of their part of the money goes to pay our fees. We only get paid by those who pay late and when they pay, if that makes any sense.
So having all these properties, for example, you just educate me on this to make sure that I have it right. Okay, so we have these properties, they are not paying taxes, whatnot. But like you said, it's a hazard as far as the growth or whatnot, or dilapidated buildings. We go in there, clean them up, put a lien on the property, and then when it sells, we get that money back?
Well, you can. Now, here's where it gets, try to follow me on this one, it gets a little complicated. The way tax liens work is theoretically, on January the first of every year, the city of Rio Grande attaches a tax lien to every property because you have the authority to issue a tax for, for property taxes. So, but when it comes to what we call a negligence lien, let's say, you know, Juan Garza owns this lot. Juan Garza hasn't, you know, mowed his lawn, and, you know, weeds are, you know, three feet high. So you go in there and you attach a lien. That lien, you have the ability to foreclose vis-à-vis that lien. You can foreclose on that lien while Mr. Juan Garza owns that property. Okay, so you've attached, but you have to, you can't just go cut the lawn. You actually have to cut the lawn, perform the service, then you got to perfect your lien by filing a notice of lien. Then you can actually enforce that lien. But once that Juan Garza sells that property, depending on how that sale is done, you may lose the ability to enforce the lien on the property. The lien will still exist, or you can still collect and take a judgment against Juan Garza. In this case, we're talking about tax foreclosures. So let's say, the past ten years, Juan Garza did not maintain his lot. You have five years' worth of tax liens, and then you foreclose, which this happens often. We foreclose for non-payment of taxes. All those liens that you filed for the past five years, you can no longer foreclose on the property because the law basically says you should have done it when Juan Garza owned the property. It's a negligence lien, you know, it's Mr. Garza's negligence that allowed him, or gave you the ability to file that lien. You can take a judgment, you can abstract that judgment, and you go after Mr. Garza personally, but you can't go after the new owner, okay? In this case, you're the new owner. Now going forward, once this, like these properties, these thirteen-
The property can still be sold even though there's a lien on it. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Yes, title companies, now the-
Depending on the type of lien.
Yes, that's why I went back, you know, because the title companies will always pay those liens. If there's any type of lien on the property, because that's part of what they're guaranteeing to the new purchaser, is that there's going to be no liens attached, and there's no threat of someone coming back to foreclose on that property. So from the date that the property, like these thirteen that got struck off, if the city were to go out and send their mowing crews out there to maintain the property, now you don't really have a lien, what you have is an expense to maintain the property because you own these thirteen properties along with the school and the county, but you're all other ones tasked with maintaining the properties, right? So you can keep track of, well, the past six months, we've sent our mowing crew out there three times, so we're due five-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
What's the best way to address that issue?
Well, are you talking about the outstanding liens, or are you talking about-
They seem to make sure that it is done, because bottom line, it behooves us to take care of the property. You know, let's say it's a hazard as for whatnot, but how do we address it to where it minimizes the cost to us, but at the same time, it addresses the issue, which is the property not being neglect, or property being neglected?
And it's a great question, Mayor. We're actually doing this with the City of Far right now, in which the City of Far, once they file three liens on any particular lot, on any property, it triggers a red flag within their system there at the city, where we handles, you know, the weedy lot liens in the city. And then they automatically send us a notice to say, hey, this one has three lot liens, and then we look to see if they owe any delinquent taxes. And if they do, we start fast-tracking it for litigation and foreclosure because that, so we don't wait five or ten years down the road. So, you know, if someone has accumulated three, four, or five weedy lot liens in the course of six months or a year, twelve months, you know where it's headed. So, you know, it's one of those that's starting to go into that black hole, kind of so to speak. So I think the best thing to do is we'll work with your city staff, with Mr. Pettis, and perhaps let's start with running a report on all your outstanding liens. Let's see if we have those in litigation. If we don't, we'll get them into litigation quickly and start targeting those. And then what we can do is, when we take a judgment, is include your weedy lot lien in the judgment. That's another caveat there, that if your weedy lot lien is included in the judgment, when we go to sell, what we sell is the judgment, and that may make sense to some of the attorneys here. So if I include that weedy lot lien in your judgment, and I go and sell the judgment, then you get a prorated amount. You may not recover the full amount, but you at least recover a prorated amount along with what's owing taxes to all the other municipalities. So it's a little complicated, but we do it all the time, and we'll certainly do it for the city.
But it's been done already by other municipalities?
Absolutely.
A way to at least offset some of the costs?
Absolutely. But, and again, then, you know, on these that we just struck off, you know, this few months ago, and some that we struck off earlier last week, as a matter of fact, is we'll work with Mr. Pettis and say, look, let's start fast-tracking some of these. And I think, you know, Mr. Pettis and Mr. Brown have made significant progress already. I think they've already had some of that conversation. Plus, they've already identified the top one-hundred delinquent accounts, and we're starting to really start to fast-track those, because it makes sense to target those as well.
I'm just, I'm the one that basically is looking at having a list on the delinquent taxes on the downtown area, the main street area. Because we need a, we need a clean house downtown, especially those that are not paying the taxes.
I agree. I completely agree.
There's a lot of abandoned properties in the old town site. Neighbors are, of course, they complain, and they're afraid that they might catch fire, and there's concern.
You know, and Commissioners, I'll be very, very honest with you all. We obviously work at your discretion, and we work for you all, and we work at Charles Directive. And if we don't have a directive, what we do is we start looking, we have target roles. We run a report of the top dollar, you know, delinquent accounts, because it makes more sense. If you're going to file lawsuits, start with those that owe the most amount of money. And then we also run a report on number of years, where we, because obviously, the value is very high. And if someone's only delinquent one or two years, they're going to be at the top of that list. But someone whose little weedy lot may not have a lot of value, they may not have paid their taxes in ten or fifteen years. They're going to be at the very bottom of that list, and it's unfair to someone who only has two or three years delinquent to get sued, and someone who hasn't paid in fifteen years not get sued. So we do two different reports, and we file on those who owe the most amount of money, those who owe the most amount of years, regardless of the dollar amount, and then we target some in the middle to kind of, you know, you have to kind of ruffle feathers across the entire spectrum. So it's a very balanced approach. So that's the approach we normally follow. But at the end of the day, again, we work for you all, and if, until you come and tell us, say, this is where we'd like to target, you know, our efforts, by all means, we're open to that. And we do it in a bunch of different municipalities, and we'd be happy to do it here. You know, I know Mr. Brown is originally here from Rio Grande. I have several employees from this area that work here in the Rio Grande office. But you all have a little bit better, you know, idea of what's going on here within the city, and just come and, you know, let us know, you know. And all you got to do is communicate to our office, we'd like to do that. So I really commend you for that because that's what we're here for. And there's two different mechanisms by which you can clean up these properties. If they owe delinquent taxes, then let us do it because it makes sense, and we'll do it at no additional cost. And we're going to, you know, you don't pay for our services technically. Now, if for some ungodly reason, they don't owe delinquent taxes, but the property's abandoned, then you can defer to your general counsel, let him go through the condemnation process and whatnot. And that may take a little longer, but, so if you can use us, by all means, that's what we're here for, and we'd love to do the work for you. Those are all very good questions, though.
Anything else?
Hopefully, I didn't confuse everybody. I know, I told you in the very beginning it was going to be a boring presentation by numbers. Again, Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to work for you all. We really do not take it lightly, and I enjoy being out here and working with your residents, and we'll continue to treat them with as much respect as we can, and I think in treating them with respect and some dignity, we're successful in getting them to start paying down their debts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, business in orders, item six, letter A, appointments and memberships, discussion and possible action to appoint members to the Kelsey Bass Museum and Event Center Commission, six A.
Ms. Melinda? Trevino?
Hello, Mr. Trevino.
Hello, Lady Mayor, Council. This is a request to consider the appointment of all the members of the Kelsey Bass Commission. So we're respectfully just asking for your recommendation, your approval on the names. The names that are presented are all residents of Rio Grande City and Starr County, and they all have something very significant to offer. Whatever. If you have any other questions, please.
How's it going with the Kelsey Bass?
It's going very well. Our fundraiser has already toppled over ten thousand. We're at ten thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-five, but we still, we're going to have a phase two. The Kelsey Bass Commission has agreed to start a phase two because of the demand.
The demand.
Yes.
Everybody wants a break.
Yes, and a paper, and the ground is already, you know, being taken care of. They're going to put the foundation, I think, this week, by Friday, they should. And papers are being sand blessed right now and printed. So we're going to have a little unveiling probably in August, the first week of August or so.
And I look forward to the national recognition.
I hope so. At least some sort of accreditation. We have other projects too that we're working on.
Yes, you all are very active. The museum is very active and certainly thank all the commission members for their work and time and effort. It's incredible what they've done in such a short period of time.
Yes.
Of course, with the leadership of Commissioner Jones here and everyone else, of course.
We started this fundraiser in February, so we're wrapping up June thirtieth, so it's pretty good, ten thousand in just a short amount of time.
Mayor and Commissioners, this, in letter A, you'll see that they're serving a two-year term, and we had discussed before about their terms being staggered. Conceptually, you don't want to lose all of them all at once, or change them all at once. So staggering them will allow us to have continuity and not lose the experience that they already gained.
Yes.
All right, so we have appointments, this is twenty-sixteen dash eleven. Is that what I?
To appoint.
To appoint.
All right, so we have a-
I saw a move there.
Okay, we have a motion to the appointments by Commissioner Jones. We have a second by Commissioner Garza. All those in favor signify by saying aye. If aye opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trevino. Next, business in orders, item seven A, planning, discussion and possible action on request for wine and beer retailer's on-premise license by Marius Coles El Valle located at twelve oh two West Highway three, Rio Grande City, Starr County, Texas.
Mr. Milan had to leave in an emergency.
Okay.
He left me a paperwork. Apparently, everything went through PNC on the tenth, and it was approved. They didn't have any issues.
Did I hear TMZ or TMBC? Did I hear from me?
PNC.
Oh, PNC. Or is it already that time? Where's my copy? All right, wait, not PNC.
Yes, sir.
So no issues as far as any citations, any prior, nothing? And the same thing with the outside of the school and?
Correct.
All right.
Just to have a quick, Mr. Bruhl, a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Amidis. We have a second by Commissioner Flores. All those in favor signify by saying aye. If aye opposed, motion carries. Next, business in orders, item seven B.
Yeah, I have a, just some points, just to make sure. It meets the requirement as far as the distance?
Distance, yes, sir.
Okay.
I did ask about that.
Okay.
Letter B, discussion and possible action to review and approve the plans and specifications for the project referenced as the St. Ives Project, seven B.
Mayor, Commissioners, we do have represented, we have the city, we have the engineer for the project, Pastor Hector Lopez with SMB Infrastructures. We have been working on the plans in coordination with the developer and also with real delta engineering. If you all recall, the project is funded by EDA. It is for widening the channel of the creek and also to construct a public street that is part of the drainage in order to sustain the commercial development in the area in front of Walmart. The plans mirror the plans that were submitted with the Clomart to FEMA back in two thousand and fourteen. The object is to remove the area out of a floodplain. The object is to remove the area out of a floodplain. Uh, from the time of, of that application to now, we've had several big rains. Uh, not too long ago, the creek rose to the very top. And, uh, there was some settling of, of the soils, but those are all engineering terms and I'm gonna pass it to Mr. Lopez. He's gonna present the plans and, you know, that we have a set, excuse me, sir. With the special conditions that are required to be go part of the bidding package. The presentation is so you all can have an understanding of the excavation. Uh, it does not include the street project and the street, uh, plans. After you all's acceptance, it goes to EDA. They will review the plans and they will then authorize us to go out for bids. Sort of the similar, uh, fashion that TWDB has for the lift stations. So, Ms. Lopez.
Mayor, Commissioners, on registration, good afternoon. My name is Mr. Lopez. I'm a project manager and engineer with SMB Infrastructure. Today, Mr. Frank Chau, one of our engineers who has been assisting on this project. Mayor, if I may, I'd like to pass along a couple of the hard copies of the plans and some supplemental drawings that I'd like you to share some information with. I believe last time, your, my last presentation, we talked about the environmental review as part of our due diligence to ensure that there would be no glitches as we move forward on the development of the project. Since then, we've been working in preparing the plans and specifications, uh, for the excavation of the Dos Olmos Creek West Bank so that we can meet the grade lines as per that letter of map revision that was previously approved by FEMA back in 2016. Uh, what we are requesting today is basically your consideration and approval to submit these plans to the EDA for their commenting and review and begin the process of securing the funds specifically for this project. Or, uh, please note that these plans, although they are technically complete, they are as to what we refer as 100% submittal. And the reason is, is because we're still likely to await comments and review and add, incorporate changes per the EDA as well as, at this time, we don't have a letting date or a bid date that will need to be incorporated also in the specifications prior to the bid advertisement. Scheduling wise, you know, once we submit these plans to the EDA, we are anticipating in the next three to four weeks, we will receive their comments. At that, that time, we will make those final changes to the plans and specifications and resubmit to the EDA for their concurrence. Once we have done that, then we will come back to you with a final set of plans and specifications and we'll be requesting your approval for advertisement. At that time then, we will have specifically the dates, when we plan to advertise, the opening, the pre-bid meetings, agendas and, and all that and other information. If I may, uh, real quick, if I may refer to this first drawing, this is basically what I call the Bible. This is what the grading plan that had been approved by the letter of map revision. This is what we must accomplish as part of the development in order to bring those 85 acres of the proposed property into compliance with the FEMA Clomar so that they are considered out of floods. And that involves basically excavating and regrading the channel, uh, with that, this specific configuration. So, so this is our goal and this is a must, it must be accomplished. As part of our work, what we've done after the environmental review was to conduct some aerial and on-ground surveys and invite me to return to the next meeting. This is an aerial that was flown in early June with, uh, a drone mapping. As part of that, the first step was to set some controls so that whenever you fly and obtain your points for your ground elevation, that they are accurate and have a reference point. Uh, this was flown at about 400 feet and there was a point, basically every step, over a million points were collected from the drone aerial mapping. These little square marks, which are our control points, are four by four. We have, uh, this aerial photograph, which I will be providing you in a CD. Basically, if you zoom to that little recta, the little plaque, this is how, uh, how, what's the word? How accurate you can get to in, with the, uh, CD, uh, with the aerial map. Now, subsequent to that, then we did on-ground surveys where we went and established, walked the whole center of the creek and established all these points around the boundary for the lim, what we call the limits of the work, which is basically where we plan to excavate and obtain some cross-sections also for ensuring and, and ensuring that we have the proper, uh, topographic data. And basically, on these aerial photos, you see the topographic information. From there, we basically developed our typical cross-sections. Basically, what we're planning to do is that from the edge of the creek, we plan to excavate, create a slope, and all that soil material is going to be placed on top of the land area of the 85 acres that are planned to be developed. That's essentially the project. Uh, we're anticipating, based on our most recent topographic surveys and, and volume calculations, that there's approximately 377,000 cubic yards to be moved. Based on the schedule that we're contemplating, we're looking at about 150 to 180 days, if we can get another 30 days, uh, to, uh, set as the contract schedule. That means it will be excavating around anywhere between 2,500 to 2,800 cubic yards per day. To give an idea of what that is, that we, that means that you will require about 25 trucks per hour hauling the material, if you use haul, if you use trucks. We're leaving it open as to how...
How many?
Yes, sir.
Twenty-two to 25.
Twenty-two to 25 per hour?
Right. Which, it seems like a lot, but if you start thinking that a truck can carry 50 cubic yards and you're only going a half a mile and coming back with a round trip of 10 minutes, you're looking at six trucks that you need to keep busy. So, two pieces of equipment, six trucks, bulldozers, graders, and the plan is basically, as you notice from the picture, there's a lot of brush. First, all that brush needs to be cleared and brought, stockpiled. We're requesting and working with the city where we would like to do burns once a month. Probably take three to five days. Once they clear and grab, then we're gonna remove this upper six inches, the topsoil, to one side and then begin the excavation. Reason we wanna do that is because topsoil is not good material for building purposes, so for creating a path. After they, so the contractor will do that in the beginning and anticipating two, three weeks, then excavation will begin. It will be basically moving forward, clearing, brushing as they come in with the excavation behind that. Uh, it's, uh, so that's basically the plan. Again, at this point, we're ready to submit to the EDA for their review and approval. As far as, uh, engineering costs for this project, we're ranging anywhere between 1.4 to 1.8 million dollars. Why such a big difference? That is because we have one line item excavation involved, 377,000 cubic yards. Based on what we're seeing from contractors and on literature search of what's going on across Texas, it's ranging anywhere from 250 to $4 a cubic yard. So $1 difference throws you off 380,000. And, uh, basically, that's, that's where we are right now, sir, and, uh, we're requesting to move forward and that is your consideration and from your path.
I'd like to add, I know that you had some additional changes to these plans, then your, I just want clarification for their sake. You added more points to the design, to what you put together? Can you elaborate on that?
Yes, sir. I guess you can say, I always say that engineering is not a 100% perfect practice. The more I look at them, the more I wanna change things to make them more clear. We added some other details on the, on the sections. We have, for example, our cross-sections did not show where there were the alignments, so we incorporated additional details to make the contractor more keen as to what is anticipated.
But it's not changing the plan or the design?
No, sir. In essence, it's the same work area, same volume, same materials, just additional information and notes to, uh, guide the contractor.
Okay.
Or the potential bidder, sure.
You said it was 375,000 cubic yards?
Yes.
And that is sufficient to cover those acreage? I mean, I'm assuming that...
That was the study that was submitted with the FEMA Clomar. Um, I know that the developers, uh, has purchased additional property in anticipation if he might need some. Uh, once onboard, you know, it could go either way, that he might not need that dirt or that he will, but as far as excavating the channel for purposes of hydraulic and hydrology for the FEMA, I think that's what's gonna come out of there. And you tightened those controls and estimated that amount, because it was a lesser amount, I think, you had.
Our previous estimate was 346,000 cubic yards. And we've, based on some quick calculation that I've gone for the new pad developed area on those 85 acres, you're at least going to need around 230,000 cubic yards. So we feel that, uh, there is sufficient material to accommodate the development. In fact, there may be a little surplus that we may come back and request here.
And Mayor, and for the sake of knowing, you know, how it goes, in that first map, if, if you can see some of the lines, the contour lines, and it goes from 160 to 162, um, and the elevation, and that's what they're trying to accomplish, the 162, um, elevation. And most of the property towards the south end, near the, the tracks, will not require much fill, so the rest will go towards the north. And then, of course, the streets, they don't need to be at the elevated, so some of that dirt will also be used on the areas where they'll, you'll have structures. It's mostly the footprint of the, of the buildings that need to be elevated. Uh, but the attempt of the developers to get the whole 85 acres out of a flood zone. So he's, like, all the dirt will go there, they'll roll it out, they'll compact it, test it, and then submit it to FEMA and says, "Okay, it met the elevation." FEMA will give the, remove the condition out of the letter of map revision and he'll be able to provide a flood-free area.
Have they already closed their property?
Uh, I've had, I think they said, like, in about a couple of weeks, they were waiting for some negotiations with the railroad owner and I think that you just got notice of that, that was already sent.
Right.
Um, and part, I'm sorry.
He's saying that at, once he clears the railroad issue, he's probably three to four days away from closing. He says the bank is ready, all his paperwork is ready, and that's the only outstanding matter right now. It was really a right-of-way issue that was not cleared up when Sam took it over. And so they were getting the paperwork for that to clear it up.
Which, which is a very good point, Mayor, because as part of the EDA final approval, there is a title in submittal in which you are basically certifying that you are the owners of the, or have control of the property.
But going back on this, or moving on this, for example, how would that put us in? Let's say they don't close, what, what now?
The process from, from, from this, today's meeting, uh, with this, this is only the creek work, it's not the road. Um, the only thing that would be pending would be the actual property deed, uh, where we're telling EDA, "We have the land, we have the plans, we're ready to move." Uh, my last conversation with them was that the plans that we were gonna be submitted did not include the street construction. Now, if we did, we get the street construction plans and the property deed, at the same time, we'll come back to you all and approve the whole package. I'd rather have one EDA review than two EDA reviews. Um, and so, that process, uh, when Mr. Lopez had mentioned a while ago, about two to three weeks to get some comments from EDA, might be delayed the time that it takes for us to get the property document.
Okay, but what, what I'm trying to ask is, if we move on this and for some reason they don't close, how does that affect us?
With our obligations to EDA? We still have, uh, until November of next year to complete the project. Um, we feel that if, we're kinda like about two months behind our schedule, two to three months behind our schedule. Uh, if everything still goes and they close within the next couple of weeks, we'll be within our obligations to EDA. And I know Mr. Lopez mentioned about 100 and 16...
Not to say that they're not, again, I just, I mean, where would that put us? I mean, in really, if, so you're recommending at this point, staff is recommending to move on this and...
On the creek work.
On the creek work, right.
Remember, we still need the part of the road, the street, the boulevard that we're gonna develop, that needs to catch up with this so that we get feedback from EDA and finalize all plans. Uh, so this is a piece of it and we're still lacking the road.
But you all are, you know, whole staff is ready to move on this. Is EDA?
Yes, sir.
Are you're good as well? I mean, any, any ask?
And this is just, this is just to submit to EDA.
Right.
Uh, once they have their own comments and review and they're incorporated and we have the full package, final package, it's gonna come back...
For final approval.
For approval to go out for bids.
Okay. No more questions? I have a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ramirez, second by Commissioner Garza. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Appreciate it. Does it need to be redone?
It does. They verbalize.
Does it need to be redone?
Yes.
Next, Business and Order, yes, sir, Item Eight.
Let me, uh, Mayor, Mayor. I think you...
Time out.
Yeah, go ahead and, right, let's, on this one, a motion that it be specific to submit it to EDA.
Okay, so going back to...
You have to rescind the motion and then we make the motion.
To rescind the motion.
Rescind the motion to approve.
Motion to rescind.
Motion to rescind, which would be Letter Seven B. And...
Want to make a motion to rescind, uh, Letter Seven B?
Yeah, we have a motion to rescind Letter Seven B by Commissioner Ramirez. Second.
One sec.
Second by Commissioner Garza. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries now. It would be to...
Like to make a motion, Mayor, to submit plans and specifications to EDA.
Okay, we have a motion to, who is it? Submit plans, to make sure we have it correctly. Motion to submit plans and specifications to EDA by Commissioner Ramirez.
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Garza. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. She carries. Thank you. Now, we need to make sure we do it right. All right, then moving on to Executive Session, that, number eight, Executive Session, Chapter 551, Texas Government Code, Section 551 dot 071, Consultation with Attorneys, Section 551 dot 072, Local Government Code, and Section 551 dot 074, Personal Matters. It is 8:11 PM. Okay, we're back from Executive Session. It is 9:15 PM. Have, uh, item nine, we convene into regular session in consideration of action on matters discussed during Executive Session, including the following. Letter A, there's no action on 9A. There is no action on 9B. And there's no action on Item 9C. And Item 9D?
On Item 9D, I move to send final offer to Rino Gonzalez Law Firm as discussed in Executive Session.
Okay, we have a motion. Have a second by Commissioner Ramirez. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Motion carries. This time, we have a motion to adjourn. Have a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Ramirez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Flores. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Motion carries. We need to adjourn, yes. It is 9:16 PM.